Good evening and welcome to the Municipality of Anchorage Plating Board. It is April 7, 2021 at 6:30. We are at the ZJ Luzac Library, 3600 Denali Street. Due to concerns over large gatherings amid the COVID-19 outbreak, community members are strongly encouraged to provide testimony via email or by telephone. While remote participation is strongly encouraged, in-person attendance is now permitted. The Plating Board encourages anyone wishing to provide public testimony via telephone to email platingphonetestimony@anchorageak.gov. By 2:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, please provide your name, phone number, and agenda item number and title for which you wish to provide testimony. The subject line should read "Phone Testimony." The secretary will phone you at the number you provide, and you will be given three minutes to provide testimony on each item that you wish to speak on, or five minutes for group representatives. Please do not submit case comments to this email address. All documents listed on this agenda are available online at www.muni.org/watchnow. For auxiliary aid services or special modifications to participate, please contact the meeting secretary to request reasonable accommodation at (343) 7576 or (343) 7927. May we have a roll call?
Valerie Ritz.
Present.
Clayton Walker.
Present.
Kevin Cross.
Present.
Don Porter.
Present.
Mark Seward.
Present.
Corinne McGilvray.
Present.
Jana Welteena is excused. Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item of business, we have action summary from Wednesday, February 3, 2021. One moment. I'd like to have a motion to reorder some business. I'd like to take the annual election of officers last, and I'd like to move case S12599 to be after case 12600. Do I have a motion?
Kevin Cross, I move.
Thank you, Kevin. Would you state your motion?
Yeah, regarding tonight's agenda, I move case S12599 to the last case to be heard as well as the election.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Mark Seward has seconded. Is there any opposition to the motion on the floor? Seeing and hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Next, we'll turn our attention to approvals. Action summaries, Wednesday, February 3, 2021. May I have a motion to approve the action summary? Kevin Cross has moved, and it's been seconded by Mark Seward. Is there any opposition to the motion on the floor? Seeing none in the room and none online, the motion passes. Next, we'll turn our attention to the minutes from February 3, 2021. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted? Kevin Cross has moved to approve, and it's been seconded by Mark Seward. Are there any comments, corrections, or changes that need to be made that any member would like to comment on? Seeing none in the room and none online and hearing nothing, the motion to approve the minutes passes. Next, we'll turn to special order of business. Do we have any disclosures this evening?
This is Corinne McGilvray, requesting to speak.
Thank you, Ms. McGilvray. You have the floor.
Yeah, I'm requesting to recuse myself from case number S12599. As I've recused myself from cases in the past involving Spinell Homes, as I have a personal relationship.
Hang on one moment. I got the motion, but it didn't even start to fade out on me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm requesting to recuse myself from case S12599, as I have a personal relationship with personnel at Spinell Homes.
Do I have a motion?
Question.
Yes, go ahead.
Carla, Kevin Cross here. Do you have a financial interest in this particular case? Do you have?
I do not.
Do you have knowledge of this case that's been presented to you outside of what's been presented as a staff packet?
I do not.
Okay. And do you think that you could remain partial?
I do.
Okay. I guess I'm curious in this particular case, just because you have a personal relationship with someone who is employed by the petitioner, whether or not that rises to the case of a conflict of interest?
Since coming onto the board, I have recused myself from cases where Spinell Home was involved in the past, as per guidance given to me, but it seemed unnecessary. I'm happy to participate.
Can we have a motion directing McGilvray to participate in case S12599?
Last question. If she excuses herself, will we still have enough for a quorum?
On this matter, it'll be shortboard, but the...
Okay, as long as petitioner's fine with the shortboard. How many, as long as...
They will present their options once that occurs.
Thank you.
So, we're still looking for a motion. Kevin Cross has moved, and do I have a second? Mark Seward has seconded. Kevin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, regarding... I apologize. Regarding the... What I've moved is approved to direct a member, a girl, to participate in case 12599. And I actually will be supporting that. I don't... I think just because she has a personal relationship with someone who's employed by Spinell does not necessarily mean that she's not able to... She said she doesn't have a financial interest, she doesn't have any knowledge of this case beforehand, and she can remain impartial. So, I guess I would be okay with her participating in it, but I'll leave that to the rest of the board if anybody has any comments.
Thank you. And do we have any other board members that would like to weigh in?
Yeah, I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on it.
Mr. Seward?
I'll be supporting the motion for Karen McGilvray to participate in this case that we're about to hear. I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is Don Porter, requesting to speak.
Don, you have the floor.
Yes, as long as we have an affirmative from Corinne on the fact that she believes that she could be impartial, you know, in light of the relationship, then I am inclined to support the motion. I'd like to hear maybe an affirmative from her.
Ms. McGilvray?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Would you like to respond?
Yes, I can be impartial.
Great, thank you.
Any other members that wish to speak? In that regards, we will go ahead and call the vote, and we'll do a voice call.
Mr. Porter?
Yea.
Mr. Cross?
Yea.
Mr. Seward?
Yea.
Ms. Ritz?
Yea.
Chair Walker?
Yea.
And Ms. McGilvray has abstained.
Ms. McGilvray, you've been directed by the board to participate in case S12599.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing and hearing none, we'll next turn to informational items. We have abbreviated plat action summaries from February 1, February 8, February 16, February 22, and March 15 of 2021. Let the record reflect that those items have been considered by the board. Next, we will turn our attention to the consent agenda. It looks like there is nothing, no old business. So, now we will discuss new business, and to start things off, I will discuss the participation in new business. The Plating Board meets each month on the first and third Wednesday, except holidays as regular meetings. If the Plating Board fails to complete its agenda for the regular meeting, the board will carry over the remainder of the agenda to the following meeting. The procedure by which the public may speak to the Plating Board at its meeting is, after the staff's presentation is complete on a public hearing item, I will ask the public testimony on the issue. People wishing to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rule of procedure. Petitioners, including their representatives, are given 10 minutes. They may reserve part of their time for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, and PTAs are given five minutes; individuals are given three. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on an issue unless being questioned further by the board. Any individual may have appeal rights related to any action the Plating Board takes, and appeal of this decision or of any of the conditions is governed by Anchorage Municipal Code 2111304. The decision of the board at the scheduled public hearing becomes final seven calendar days after the decision is made on the record, unless a written request is submitted to the Planning Division prior to the expiration of the seventh day to prepare a written decision based upon the record made at the hearing, and the request is accompanied by a written notice of intent to appeal. Adoption of the written decision by the Plating Board becomes the final appealable decision. Within 20 days of the final appealable decision, an interested party must file with the municipal clerk either a written motion alleging new evidence or changed circumstances under AMC 2111503, or an appeal of the board's final appealable decision under AMC 2130. With that, we'll take up new business, and may we have the staff's presentation of case S12594, John and Janice Ellsworth.
Hi, yes, thank you, Chair Walker. So, this is a request for approval of a preliminary plat to subdivide two lots into two lots with vacation of 592 feet of the Overlake Circle right-of-way, 25-foot half-width. The petitioner has also requested a variance for an additional 44 feet length of the flagpole for lot 1C. These parcels are within the R1, or single-family residential zone of the municipality, and they're within the Sand Lake Community Council. They're also generally north of Campbell Lake. The southern portion of the right-of-way for Overlake Circle was never dedicated, and nothing has been developed on the northern part of Overlake Circle that was dedicated. There's a driveway south of the dedicated part of Overlake Circle that's part of a flaglot to the south, but it's not currently within the right-of-way. A single-family home is constructed on proposed lot 1D, and proposed lot 1C is treated and vacant. Lot 1C would be reached through a flagpole if Overlake Circle is vacated, and a variance is granted for an additional 44 feet of the flagpole length. No comments are received from members of the public or community councils. There were comments from agencies. None were objecting to the plat or variance or vacation, but I'll just highlight a couple that I've incorporated into the recommendations as conditions of approval. Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility commented that lot 1A is not served by a public sewer, and there's not a record of the septic system, so they either need to document a septic system, upgrade it, or show that it can utilize the public system. Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility also commented of the need for an additional easement to protect the sanitary sewer main, and Traffic Engineering requested a plat note for the driveway of proposed lot 1C to be 20 feet maximum. There are four approval criteria for variances decided by the Plating Authority. I'll briefly go over those that were in my staff report. The proposed flagpole length is approximately 164 feet, and that exceeds the maximum flagpole length of 120 feet allowed in Anchorage Municipal Code. The first of the four criteria is that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the property, such that the strict application of the provisions of the subdivision regulations would be clearly impractical, unreasonable, or undesirable to the general public. The standard is met. The southern part of the Overlake Circle half-width right-of-way is not likely to ever be dedicated, as doing so would encompass a driveway and would either cut through or cut into the setbacks for existing homes. Extending the flagpole will allow the proposed lot 1D to have a conforming lot with a single-family home while still providing access to proposed lot 1C. The second criteria is the granting of the specific variance will not be done to rental to public welfare or injurious to other property in the area. The standard is met. The variance would not adversely affect public welfare or adversely affect other properties. The driveway access to adjacent constructed homes will not change. Overlake Circle did not provide public access to Campbell Lake and will not change public access to Campbell Lake. The third criteria is that the variance will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations or the comprehensive plan. That standard is met. If the flagpole were shortened and a variance was not obtained, it would create a dead-end valley... Sorry, dead-end alley. As the southern part of Overlake Circle is unlikely to ever be dedicated, it follows the intent and purpose of subdivision regulations to vacate the right-of-way and grant access to proposed lot 1C through a flaglot. And the fourth criteria is that undue hardship would result from strict compliance with specific provisions or requirements of the subdivision regulations. That standard is also met. All of the developed parcels surrounding proposed lot 1C already have driveway access, and it would constitute undue hardship for the property owner to fully develop Overlake Circle for access to proposed lot 1C. As far as the vacation request, there are six points under municipal vacation policy. The first one is that the statement by the applicant shows that the right-of-way is surplus to current and future needs of the public and provided reasons for determining the right-of-way is surplus. So, all properties are currently served by the current road system. The half-width right-of-way being vacated is not developed. Again, does not provide access to Campbell Lake or other public lands. It's highly unlikely the southern half of the cul-de-sac and street right-of-way would ever be dedicated, and if the right-of-way were developed, it would not meet applicable design standards for a cul-de-sac. Thus, the right-of-way is found to be surplus to current and future needs of the public. Second, the official streets and highways plan. It must be shown without a doubt that the right-of-way is clearly in excess of future needs for a right-of-way. The right-of-way for Overlake Circle is not listed in the classification listing of streets in the official streets and highways plan, so this point for municipal policy is met. Third is that any right-of-way lying on the half-mile grid will not be considered for a vacation. And fourth is that any right-of-way lying on the quarter-mile grid will not be considered for a vacation. This right-of-way is not on the half-mile grid, and is also not on the quarter-mile grid. Fifth, the remaining property in the area must be adequately served, and traffic circulation is enhanced by the vacation of the right-of-way. The right-of-way for Overlake Circle only gives access to one private lot, and that is proposed instead to be accessed with a flagpole driveway. All other surrounding properties have access from the current public road system and developed driveways. If the southern part of the right-of-way for Overlake Circle were dedicated, it would likely create non-conforming structures on surrounding properties, as it would cut into setbacks and driveways. Six, the right-of-way must be shown to enhance traffic... The right-of-way realignment must enhance traffic circulation and provide for the movement of traffic with generally the same beginning and ending points of the original right-of-way. This vacation will not result in a realignment of any other existing right-of-way, and does not impact existing traffic circulation or realignment when not enhance traffic circulation. Thus, all of the points for municipal vacation policy and for a variance to be granted by the Plating Board are met. In summary, the department recommendation is to approve of the request to vacate 592 feet of the Overlake Circle right-of-way 25-foot half-width; two, to approve of the variance for municipal code for an additional 44, approximately 44 feet length of the flagpole for lot 1C; and three, approval of the plat for 24 months, subject to the following conditions: A, add a plat note that states the maximum width of the driveway for lot 1C is 20 feet; B, confirm and document sewer or septic service with Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility; and C, resolve the sewer easement with Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility. That is the end of my staff report, and please note representative for the petitioners in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? I had a couple of questions. This is Campbell Lake?
The two parcels in the right-of-way are just north of Campbell Lake. They're not directly adjacent to Campbell Lake, though, but they are just north of the lake.
And the lake is navigable water?
I honestly don't... I'd have to... I don't know the answer. I'd have to...
And the city's...
My colleague is nodding, though, yes.
And the city still has the south half right-of-way?
The south half right-of-way for Overlake Circle was never dedicated, so it's currently part of a privately owned parcel. So, there's only currently dedicated half of Overlake Circle, and the southern part was never dedicated, and it's instead private property. So, it would be difficult to, given what's there now, to create a full width of right-of-way for Overlake Circle.
But if it had been dedicated, then it would have access to the water.
No, it would not. There would still be private property between Overlake Circle and its cul-de-sac.
Now, does... So, you're saying that people own the property into the waterway?
Yes, that's correct. That are separate from this applicant. It's a different privately owned parcel.
Does that raise any questions from the board? Hearing and seeing none, we will now take the petitioner's representative.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Craig Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, with S for Group, and I'm the petitioner's representative tonight. And I'll start off with, staff did a great job on this, and we agree with their recommendation for approval, and we agree with the conditions. And I'm just here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. And you have 9 minutes 38 seconds for review.
Thank you.
At this point, do we have any questions for Mr. Bennett? I don't see any yet, so I guess we'll move to the public and...
All right, thank you.
See if they've raised any issues for us. Members of the public to call.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
This is the Plating Board calling for your public testimony on case S12594. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
I thought that I was signed up for tomorrow's zoning board of examiners. This is for Spurce terraces, right?
Nope, this is for Overlake subdivision.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. I was an individual, and I was too late to get my comments in, but I'd just like to state that right-of-ways...
Ma'am, ma'am, you keep fading in and out, and you go from extremely loud to almost non...
Okay. All right, I'll try and stand still. How is this? I was too late to get my written comments in, but I'd like to say that right-of-ways and easements are really important, and in my 50 years here, I have seen several examples of how we have lost access to places like parks or trails because part of the right-of-way or all of it was vacated. And so, I'd like to ask you to think very carefully about this. And in the future, obviously, that large rectangular parcel is going to be subdivided, so why not keep the easement, and so that, you know, you don't have to go through all of this again, the time and the expense? So, I ask you to really consider keeping that, because it obviously is going to be developed in the future at some point. And that's all I had to say.
And while we have you on the phone, does the board have any questions for Ms. Diane Ms. Holmes, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Did I hear Don Porter there with a question?
No, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes, where is the park in the area of this cul-de-sac?
That isn't it. I'm saying in my 60 years here, I have seen other instances when easements or right-of-ways have been vacated, and several of them in the Rabbit Creek area where access is severely limited or completely eliminated. So, this access, that parcel, the larger of the parcels, is going to be developed, so what is the point in vacating the easement, the access? I don't see any point to it.
And if we were to retain some right for some trail, what would it link up with?
I'm not saying that it would. I'm saying that that parcel there, the larger parcel, is going to be developed.
Well, we hope so.
And, yes, and so why vacate something that is now providing access to it for the future? I mean, there's, you know, what good will it do? It would just cause more trouble and expense in the future when it is developed, because obviously access will have to be, you know, recreated.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye. And do we have any members of the audience here this evening that would like to speak on... on this matter, Case S-12594? With no other people here and no one else listed to be calling in from the public, we'll We'll take Greg Bennett.
Thank you. Craig Bennett, again. To speak to Ms. Holmes' comment, it was seven lots that was just subdivided this past year, and now it's going to be two lots. So it was just subdivided into that one large lot. The owner's just doing it for their own personal use. And the right-of-way only goes to two existing lots, and this vacation will just provide an access, become a flaglot for the one lot in the back. And does the board have any other questions?
So was this cul-de-sac dedicated at the time it was done more recently?
No, sir. So this cul-de-sac was, well, the half width, the 25 width, was dedicated years ago, and then there was just a short plat done on it to combine it into one lot, and then they realized, sorry, that they needed to vacate the right-of-way also, so now we're coming in to vacate that right-of-way and to create a flag out of it. And then the southern -- south half was never dedicated. It was just platted without ever dedicating back in the '80s, I believe.
And there's no neighboring trails that this lot links up to anywhere on the lot?
Chairman, no, sir. There's no trails, no access to the lake. On the south side, there's a private lot with a house that, if there was ever a future dedication, would take out the north side of that house, the existing house. And, correct, there's no trails.
And I do have a question for you from Karen McGilvery.
Sorry, I -- this is Karen McGilvery. I typed that, but I think Mr. Bennett just answered my question. So this doesn't provide any, this right-of-way doesn't provide any public access to Campbell Lake, correct? It just butts up against that other private lot?
Correct.
Okay. Might I add?
Thank you, Ms. McGilvery. So if for some reason this were to be vacated, there's no commitment or obligation of the owner to actually build a single dwelling on it, right? So there's a possibility that this property winds up being sold and someone else needs to develop it?
No, sir. So if we've -- with vacating it, it's only 25-foot wide. Say, in the future, a developer wanted to come in and add those lots back in again, they would have to provide a 60-foot right-of-way, and there's only 25-foot width, so there's -- I guess a question for planning staff, but I don't see how they could do a future I think it's one way, going to the bigger lot and with the flag, and I don't see a way of going back and adding lots in the future.
And that's because?
Because if you'd add more lots, you'd have to dedicate a full width right-of-way, which would be 60-foot wide, and there's not the room to dedicate a full -- it's only 25-foot wide in that flag section. It's only a half width. And this are one, so you'd still have to do 60-foot right-of-way.
And it'd all wind up being on your side of the road?
Yep. So there's -- there'd be no way to do a future --
Somebody would have to buy some from the property owner.
I don't see any way to do a future subdivision on this.
Thank you. Does that raise any other questions from any other board members? It doesn't look like I see any. All right. Do you want any closing comments?
I don't. I just agree with planning staff on the recommendation of approval.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion to approve the request to vacate 592 feet of Overlake Circle right-of-way 25-foot half-width? Kevin Cross, would you please state your motion?
Regarding S-12594, Overlake subdivision, lots 1A and 1B, I move to approve the request to vacate 592 feet of the Overlake Circle right-of-way 25-foot half-width.
And may I have a second? Mark Seward has seconded. Kevin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, what we'll find is, as far as the vacation request, it's noted on pages four and five, the six different criteria that are required. The planning authority has gone through there, and we have, they have met all six criteria. It's also important to note that this 592-foot right-of-way currently just feeds into what is a private lot, dead ends, doesn't have access to a park, that's another piece of personal property, and essentially, you know, we're eliminating that, and it's taking that 25-foot right-of-way, which will come up on the approval number two, but basically it's just turning that back into a driveway to access a single lot. Seems very reasonable.
Thank you. Do we have any other members who wish to provide findings? Mark Seward.
Yes, in this case, in the handout, page nine shows the property to the south and shows a good aerial view of the situation. I just want to bring to the board the attention that there's already a big house to the south, and it's been brought to our attention that there's no way we could dedicate a right-of-way without encroaching into that house. But also, if you note, that flag to that house driveway is going to be longer than the flag.
Mark, could you get that microphone and better record for you?
Okay. How's that? The driveway to the, the flag portion of the lot to the south is longer than this proposed flag, so that and meeting of the standards and no negative comments, and the agency's always having positive reviews, I'm going to support this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Seward. Do we have any other findings from the board? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a voice vote.
Mr. Porter?
Yea.
Ms. McGilvery?
Yea.
Mr. Cross?
Yea.
Mr. Seward?
Yea.
Ms. Ritz?
Yea.
Chair Walker?
Yea.
Thank you.
We'll next turn to request a motion for approval of a variance from AMC 2108030K5. Kevin Cross has moved. May we have a second? Mark Seward has seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cross?
Yeah, regarding Case S-12594, Overlake subdivisions, lots 1A and 1B, I move to approve the variance from AMC 21.08.030.5 for an additional 40-foot length of the flagpole lot for 1C.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion? It has been seconded by Mark Seward.
Yes, the vacation request requirements, as we'll see, are also noted on pages two and three, and those are those which are noted as the approval criteria, dealing with other circum, special circumstances and conditions affecting the property, is the grafting of the specific variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare, such variance will not have a negative effect, nullifying the intent or the purpose of the subdivision regulations, and does it precreate undue hardship, all of which the standards have been met. And also, I'd like to point out what Mark pointed out previously on page nine, that it shows that the lot to the south basically has already extended the standard flaglet, so it seems like it's also characteristic for the area.
Thank you. Do we have a, any other comments or findings from board members? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call for a voice vote.
Mr. Porter?
Yea.
Ms. McGilvery?
Yea.
Mr. Cross?
Yea.
Mr. Seward?
Yea.
Ms. Ritz?
Yea.
Chair Walker?
Yea.
Thank you.
We'll now turn to our third motion, motion to approve the preliminary plat for 24 months, subject to three conditions. Kevin, would you like to state your motion?
Case S-12594, Overlake subdivisions, Lot 1A and 1B, I move to approve the preliminary plat for 24 months, subject to the following conditions: Conditions A, B, and C, as noted in staff packet, page six.
Thank you. And looking for a second? Mark Seward has seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Cross?
Yeah, just, we can go back through our notes on what was stated for one and two, as far as why the approval. Just additionally, the plat note, which states maximum width for driveway of Lot 1C is 20 feet. 1C, that's a flaglot, that's at 25-foot, so we understand that that flag is basically a driveway accessing the one, the one large lot. And then just the other notes here dealing with AWU.
Thank you. Do we have any other findings or comments from the board? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Mr. Porter?
Yea.
Ms. McGilvery?
Yea.
Mr. Cross?
Yea.
Mr. Seward?
Yea.
Ms. Ritz?
Yea.
Oh, thank you. Chair Walker?
Yea.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. We will now take up the case of S-12600 Lakeshore subdivision, lots 3A and 3B. May we have staff's presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a variance from lot dimensions in the subdivision regulations to allow the flagpole portion of proposed Lot 3A to be 171 feet. The maximum allowable length in code is a flagpole that is 120 feet. Pages 13 and 14 of your packet give you a zoning map and an aerial photo. Those are good sort of references on the property in question. This variance request is necessary due to the narrowness of the parcel to be subdivided and the location of the existing home on the lot. Without this variance, the property can't be subdivided, and it would remain a single lot with one home. This variance and subdivision will allow a second home to be constructed on its own lot. Municipal and state reviewing agencies had no objection to the variance request. There were no public comments submitted, and Sand Lake Community Council provided no comments either. Watershed Management Services requests additional information about the shed, and you'll see that reflected on the department recommendation on pages four and five of your packet. The department's recommending approval of the variance, subject to conditions one and two on page five of your packet. The condition from, for Watershed Management Services says, "Resolve with them compliance with applicable codes for accessory structures for that boathouse that's down near the lake." So the department finds that approval criteria A through D on pages three and four of your packet are met and recommends approval of the variance. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any questions for staff? Seeing and hearing none, we'll now take the petitioner's representative.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Craig Bennett with S4 Group, representing the petitioners tonight on this variance, and this is just a variance for a flag length because of an existing house, just to get behind the house. And we again agree with the department's recommendation of approval, and I'll reserve the rest of the time for any rebuttal.
You have nine minutes and 41 seconds. Do we have any questions for Craig Bennett at this time? Thank you, sir. We'll now open the hearing up for the general public. Do we have any that have called in?
No telephonic testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any members of the public here wishing to speak on this matter tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we'll now take Craig Bennett back up on rebuttal.
Yes, sir. Any questions from the board?
Don't see anyone making questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the request for variance? Kevin Cross, would you like to state your motion?
Regarding Case S-12600 Lakeshore subdivisions, lots 3A and 3B, I move to approve the request of the variance from AMC 21.08.030K5, lot dimensions to allow for a flagpole portion of the proposed lots 3A to extend to the maximum allowable length of 120 feet, subject to one and two.
Mark Seward has seconded your motion. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, it was very similar to the previous case that we just went over, that there are six approval criteria for a variance, and in this particular case, it's pretty cut and dry. It's the narrow width of the dimensions and the location of the lot on the front of the property caused some unreasonable hardship and difficulty to develop the lot, so, and to create a lot on the backside towards the lake, and thus extending the approval length for the flag access is completely reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other findings? One of the other findings I'd make is the, normally the length of the, length of the flagpole has to do, I believe, with safety, and we're only looking at another 13 feet, and we're looking at only a single lot, and so that is not a substantial amount, and it's not a large load that will be on this property. So I'm in, we'd be voting in favor of the motion. Are there any other findings? Seeing and hearing none, we will call for the vote.
Mr. Porter?
Yea.
Ms. McGilvery?
Yea.
Mr. Cross?
Yea.
Mr. Seward?
Yea.
Ms. Ritz?
Yea.
Chair Walker?
Yea.
Thank you.
With that, we'll now take up Case S-12599, Spinell Homes, Inc. May I have petitioner, may I have the staff's presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight with S-1259, this is an amendment, so we're amending S-12420, which was previously approved. Let me go through here and kind of explain. So the plat, original plat, was approved on December 4th, 2019, to subdivide 27 lots with a phasing plan that consisted of three phases of development. The request also included a variance to the cul-de-sac length and for one lot that exceeded the lot width depth ratio. So that, that approval, with all the conditions, the petitioner's been working on it, and they've, they've been meeting with various departments within the city, and they've came up with what you see before me tonight. And what that is, is an amendment request. And what that is, is an amendment request to a previously approved plat to remove the following from the approved conditions, the original approved conditions. So they want to remove C. 1, which is no construction beyond Phase 1, shall be permitted until a secondary access roadway serving this subdivision is funded and approved for construction, and D. 15, the following notes. C, each dwelling constructed within Phase 1 shall be protected with automatic sprinkler system. Each lot shall be developed with firewise construction landscape. And E, no construction beyond Phase 1 shall be permitted until a secondary access roadway serving this subdivision is funded and approved. And the petitioner wants to add the following condition, construct a private water system that will supply domestic household water to the lots as well as water for the purpose of firefighting to surrounding properties. So this request is being made to allow for the removal of the phasing plan, the plat notes that I read, and secondary access requirement related to firewise construction, and also to provide a private water system for domestic use as well as firefighting. So staff has looked into this, met with various departments, and met with the petitioner. Should be noted that the petitioner is currently working on the necessary required improvements and conditions that were placed on the original plat approval of S. 12420. The petitioner is proposing to install a private water system that'll provide domestic water to the homes within this subdivision and for firefighting purposes with hydrants. So the installation of the water system requires the developer to fully build out the streets and water utilities. As such, they propose to remove the phasing plan and market all 27 lots in order to create this domestic water system with all the pipes and storage, and basically hooking it up to all the houses, and building all the roads at that point. That's the reason why they are going to eliminate the phasing plan. Okay, it should be noted that the petitioner has provided preliminary traffic analysis that provides a summary of the impacts that the traffic from the Spruce Terraces development will have in relation to the Goldenview-Rabbit Creek intersection. The analysis showed that 27 lot increase vehicle delay is very minimal and maintains the same level of service. There currently exists within the AMATS Transportation Improvement Program a project that will ultimately connect Mount Air Drive to Rabbit Creek Road, which would provide secondary access to this portion of the Anchorage Hillside. While funding is secured for design only at this time, planning believes that this secondary access connection will be made a priority, and that funding will be achieved for construction. So Fire Plan Review has evaluated this Mount Air Drive-Rabbit Creek connection, the single access roadway, which is permitted by exception two of the International Fire Code, and the petitioner's construction of a NFPA 1142 compliant private firefighting water supply system, and supports the removal of the original condition, and states that the firewise construction landscaping techniques were originally intended to be in lieu of providing water supply for firefighting purposes. Additionally, Fire Plan Review has determined that the Mount Air Drive connection will provide an access road connection with future development. Now, the traffic department, they have stated in their, let's see what page that is, they have stated that they're opposed to the removal of the secondary access, and that the secondary access is critical from both life and traffic safety viewpoints for emergency access and the reduction in volume of daily traffic on the existing rights of way. Planning agrees that the secondary access is a public benefit, but staff has reviewed the Fire Plan Review comments, Kittleson Engineering Traffic Analysis, and the traffic department comments, and noted that Kittleson's engineering traffic has reported almost no delay while providing the same level of service. And it's because of these findings and the addition of the Mount Air Drive to Rabbit Creek connection to the AMATS Transportation Improvement Program that the planning department supports the conditions be revised, subject to the conditions found on page nine and 10 of the staff packet. And we had some kind of late sign-ups and late comments come in, so I would like to add another condition, as we had some members of the public talk about peripheral improvements, roads, and trails. So I would like to add a condition 18, and that is construct a separated soft surface trail for non-motorized use along the East 156 Avenue peripheral improvements, and resolve that exact alignment and width with the non-motorized transportation coordinator and private development. What I have passed out to you, Mr. Chair, I think we need to say non-motorized transportation coordinator and private development. What that section is, is a short section along East 156 Avenue. If you look at conditions found on page nine and 10 of the staff packet, the reason they are numbered that way is if we go to page 78, 79, 80, and 81, those are the original conditions, and we had to dovetail them in because all the original conditions still stand, and this is the easiest way to remove what they wanted and add the conditions, plus add some other conditions such as 17 and 18 to the staff packet. The petitioner's representative is here, and I believe they can state also to some of the meetings that they had and how they arrived at this private water system, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as you have as well. But let's also remember this is just an amendment to the previously approved plat, and it's amendment to remove those limited items. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff?
I do.
Mr. Cross, you have the floor.
Okay, so according to you, the Alaska Terraces Lane, it looks like that's what's going to go through 1, up to 155, and is that what's connecting on the Mount Air Drive, or that's what's proposed to happen in the future?
Through the chair, 156, you mean? Oh, it goes up and then it bumps up?
155, okay, 156.
And that goes up to 1, I think, like you said, 155th, and connects through, yes.
So that's good. So it's going to head east and then connect on the Mount Air Drive. And I guess I'm just curious about this, because part of the phasing plan, trying to catch through, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. It looks like Mount Air Drive just loops right back down to Sandpiper, and Sandpiper was the concern they had as far as the traffic. So it's basically just one giant loop that still just dumps out into one narrow corridor. It's not like Mount Air Drive goes somewhere else.
Through the chair, let's turn to page 19 of the staff packet.
Yeah, thank you.
And we can see where Spruce Terrace is there. It'll connect into Mount Air Drive, which is going to go, we'll say north on this, and it's going to go connect up there to kind of where Bear Valley Elementary is, and out to Rabbit Creek.
Oh, future Mount Air extension. I see. Okay, so that's, all right, it's going to continue east, so 155th continues, or it looks like 155th, it's 156, and then it kind of does that dog leg, and then heads east. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. My concern was that Mount Air Drive, it was just one big loop that was coming back on Sandpiper, but now I see what you're talking about. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to note, you guys can see, members of the board, all that kind of, we have a bunch of development that could happen, so that's why we're saying, staff is saying, this Mount Air Drive is a pretty important project. It's why it's on the tip.
Yeah, that 155th and Mount Air Drive, that whole development through there is going to be critical for alleviating a lot of this stress. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Don't see anybody else, so we'll now take up petitioner's representative.
Good evening, members of the Plating Board, staff, and members of the public. My name is Brandon Marcott, and I'm a professional civil engineer with Triad Engineering. I am here tonight representing the applicant, Spinell Homes, for this amendment to the previously approved case S. 12420. With me tonight is Grant Matthews, a professional civil engineer with Triad Engineering, Tony Hoffman, a professional land surveyor with the Boote Company, and Andre Spinelli with Spinell Homes. As staff has already presented, this new case is an amendment to condition C. 1 and D. 15C, D., and E. of the case that was previously approved in December of 2019. We are requesting to delete the condition limiting construction beyond Phase 1, as well as the conditions requiring sprinklers and firewise constructions of the future residential homes. Along with deleting these conditions, we are requesting to add a condition requiring the construction of a private water system for the purpose of supplying domestic water service as well as water for firefighting efforts. Since the previous approval in 2019, continued discussions with the Anchorage Fire Department revealed that a private water system capable of providing adequate fire flow as an alternative to sprinklers in firewise home construction is both feasible and of greater benefit to the subdivision and surrounding properties. This system would generally consist of a well, reservoir, pump house, and distribution system with services and fire hydrants, and provide both domestic drinking water and water for firefighting needs. These standards are established by NFPA 1142, which is listed in new condition 9E. AFD will be reviewing the civil plans, providing design input, and will be the responsible agency to sign off on this condition. The Mount Air Drive connection to Rabbit Creek Road has been added to the AMATS Transportation Improvement Program. This has secured funding for the design for the future connection, which will provide secondary access to the area. You will find the Fire Department's support for these requested changes on page 42 of your packet. Additionally, a preliminary traffic analysis completed by Kittleson and Associates shows that the proposed 27 lots within the Spruce Terraces will have no impact on traffic operations at the intersection of Goldenview Drive and Rabbit Creek Road. This information is provided on page 30 of your packet. The item submitted as additional information, looks like this, is a fire hazard severity form taken from the 2012 International Wildland Urban Interface Code. This codebook helps guide design for fire protection and access in areas such as Spruce Terraces. Appendix C provides a hazard rating for subdivisions and takes into consideration access, road grades, topography, firewater source availability, et cetera. Spruce Terraces scores a total of 39 points, which is below the lowest rating, which is a moderate hazard. This information was provided to Anchorage Fire Department during our correspondence regarding the proposed amendments being heard tonight. In summary, the Anchorage Fire Department and planning staff has found the requested changes to be acceptable alternative to the previously approved conditions. If approved, this development will be constructed to a higher safety standard than the adjacent subdivisions and others within the municipality that do not have immediate access to water for firefighting. Additionally, this system would benefit the other homes in the area by providing AFD access to fire hydrants, which are currently non-existent in this area of the Anchorage Hillside. Staff has provided updated department recommendations, being on page nine of your packet. We are in full agreement with these conditions and the additional conditions that staff has added tonight, and respectfully request your approval of the requested amendment to case S. 12420. If there are no immediate questions, I'd reserve my remainder of time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have six minutes and eight seconds for rebuttal. Do we have any questions for Mr. Marcott? I don't see anybody asking questions yet, so we'll take members of the public now.
Hi, this is the Plating Board calling for your public testimony on case S. 12599. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
Not just an individual.
Okay, you have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could please state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Yeah, Anthony Henry. Just questions or, I guess, input that I wanted to have for this, I guess, this development that's occurring in my neighborhood. I live in Shangri-La Estates, and the concern that I have, and I don't know full details of the development, but the road access, we have one road in there. Phase two of the subdivision, I live in Shangri-La, was supposed to have a second road put in before they allowed, the city allowed development of that second phase of the subdivision. They initially got state approval, had funding, started the plan, and then allowed the second phase to be put in, and then pulled the funding for that road. And so now we have two phases of that subdivision with significant number of houses, normally one road in and out of the location. So I'm concerned about that, particularly with fire hazards on hillside, and with regards to the ingress of additional heavy vehicles coming up the road that I think was put in and paved probably 10 years ago, and the damage that that might cause. So I don't know if there are plans to require a second egress into that area before this development occurs, but I think that that's prudent and should occur. And that's really all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from the board for Mr. Henry? Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Christian.
This is the Plating Board calling for your public testimony on case S. 12599. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
Well, I'm an individual, but I do have a family. Does that get me two more minutes?
Unfortunately not. You'll have three minutes. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Christian Raywall, and I live on Farview, just to the west of the proposed development. I have many points I'd like to discuss and concerns concerning drainage, and of course the fire situation. I just heard that Mount Air Drive, quote, "We believe it has momentum. We believe the future Mount Air extension," and that's also my belief. When I bought the house seven years ago, I was told that there would be no more developments until that was an actual existing road. And so I don't believe in unicorns, and I'm skeptical of Mount Air extension, so I see it. The prior ruling was to build once it was completed, and that's why it was in the last meeting that was approved, and that's why I believe it should not be removed, because as many water sources as we can provide is great if AFD can actually get here. Access to AFD is the important part. I know, as Mr. Spinell is very familiar, when you build a home with bedrooms, you have to have requirements for safety. You can't build a bedroom in the city without two means of egress by law. City inspectors will not allow that to happen. And yet, we seem to find 67 homes currently without egress. And so my family is serious, we want egress before more development is taking place. And so, as I said, private water supplies are great, and so are fire hydrants if the fire crew can actually access them. Hypothetically, if there was one kid playing with matches or a magnifying glass at the middle school, set off the spruce trees, there's any kind of a wind from the west, you have a lot of people heading up the longest one-way road in the municipality, hoping there's helicopters to airlift us out, because we didn't take the risk seriously. Egress is not something that any other department in the city just overlooks. And so I just think that was the ruling, my understanding from the Plating Board previously, and I think it was never a good idea to disregard that. If there's any development, my other concern would be proper drainage, and the phasing is a part of that. I live on Farview, just downhill from the development, and my concern is that we already have drainage from Sandpiper that comes down to Farview. have drainage from Sandpiper that comes down to Farview. And the new development has talked of some kind of a drainage plan, but I have no idea what it looks like. There's already been flooding in houses when Shangri-La was developed on Sandpiper also, my neighbors just north and west of here. And so a homeowner's policy does not cover floodwater.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Your time has expired.
Okay.
Do we have any questions from the board for Christian Rowal?
Hi, is this Alan?
Yes, I was helping my wife. We go first?
Yep, we did give her a try. If you'd like to pass the phone to her, she did not answer our call.
Absolutely, I'll pass it to her right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
This is the Plating Board calling for your public testimony on case S 12599. Calling as an individual, you'll have 3 minutes to provide testimony. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Hello, I'm Ruth Dukoff. I'm speaking in opposition to Spinell Homes petition. My husband Alan Burnbaum and I submitted detailed written comments. In short, Spinell is asking you to violate multiple laws. But more importantly, Spinell is asking you to put its interest in immediate profits before the lives and homes of the hundreds of children and adults who live in the area of 162nd and Elizabeth. And Spinell is asking you to violate the law and endanger the lives and homes, even though it's about the property during of the conditions it now wants you to eliminate. Here are the pared-down facts. First, the full build-out of the proposed and existing developments of at least 144 homes would depend on a single access road every day in an event of an emergency such as the Hillside wildfire. Second, the single access road is steep and narrow and has blind hairpin turns. It is, as Spinell concedes, hazardous for pedestrians and motorists alike. Third, the Traffic Department has repeatedly determined that secondary access to this area is critical from life and traffic safety viewpoints. Fourth, Spinell purchased the property less than 18 months ago, knowing about the conditions it now wants eliminated. Fifth, there is no basis for determining the Mountaineer extension will be approved and funded. The only change since 2019 is that voters approved spending on design work, less than 1% of the total estimated cost of the extension. Sixth, not all of the homes above Elizabeth, including ours, have automatic sprinkler systems. Seventh, providing a private water system to the development will do nothing to protect the lives and homes of the hundreds of people who live above Elizabeth, and if they can't quickly enough evacuate, and firefighters and other first responders can't quickly enough access the area. Also, there's no evidence Spinell needs the condition eliminated to build the private water supply system. Eighth, the variance for the length of the cul-de-sac was approved based on the phased construction condition, and nothing in the Planning Department's 2021 staff report addresses retaining the variance without that condition. Ninth, eliminating the phased construction condition would mean ignoring the Traffic Department's 2021 and 2019 finding and recommendation, ignoring the Development Services Department 2019 recommendation, ignoring the right-of-way section's 2021 comment, there is no guarantee when the peripheral roads are to be built or at all, ignoring the Planning Department's own 2019 findings and recommendations, and ignoring the findings of the Anchorage Assembly that recent Anchorage wildfires showed the need for areas in the municipality to have at least 2 access routes. Indeed, in the event of a wildfire, the Fire Department must decide, might decide not to send firefighting personnel and equipment to the area above Elizabeth because the existence of only 1 access road, a road, again, that Spinell concedes is hazardous, mean they might be trapped. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ruth Dukoff?
...and ignoring the findings of the Anchorage Assembly that recent Anchorage wildfires...
Ruth, would you mind muting anything that you have in the background? Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for Ruth Dukoff? Thank you, Ms. Dukoff. Would you hand the phone back to Alan Bimbom?
Alan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. If you could state your full name for the record, you'll have 3 minutes to provide your testimony.
Hello, this is Alan Burnbaum. First, I object to the fire hazardous severity form that was put on the City View portal today. It was not timely received, we don't know what it's based on, and we've not had an adequate opportunity to review it. Based on the facts, granting Spinell's petition to eliminate the phased construction condition would violate at least 3 laws intended to protect life and property. First, it would violate AMC 21.07.06OD.3.D., because 117 current and approved for development residential units already depend on a single access road, and adding the proposed development would cause the area to exceed the legal limit by over 40%. Moreover, as the Traffic Department notes, a secondary access road is feasible. Second, granting the petition would violate AMC 23.45.D.107.1, because far more than 30 dwelling units already depend on a single access road. As the Fire Department determined in 2019, exception 2 does not apply, nor could the Fire Department have reasonably changed its mind. The only change since 2019 is that the voters approved spending on design work, less than 1% of the total estimated cost of the secondary access road, nor is exception 1 apply, as not all of the homes above Elizabeth have an automatic sprinkler system. Third, granting the petition would violate AMC 21.08.03OF.6.A., because the variance for the length of the cul-de-sac depends on the phased construction condition, and nothing in the Planning Department's 2021 staff report addresses retaining the variance without that condition. And if you approve the petition, you would have no principal basis for denying the petitions of any other company to develop even more property in the area above Elizabeth despite the absence of a secondary access road and the existence of 1 hazardous road. Nor would you have grounds to deny similar petitions to develop similar areas. If you approve the petition, Spinell would profit despite the threat of its development to the lives and homes of the families who live in the area. But if, as a result, lives are lost and homes are destroyed, there will be nothing the Planning Board, the Plating Board can do to eliminate the suffering. In sum, granting the petition to eliminate the phased construction and the fire prevention conditions, all of which, again, Spinell bought the property aware of, and the latter of which we address in our written comments, would violate multiple laws, endangering the lives and homes of hundreds of Anchorage children and adults. Please do not do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Alan Burnbaum? Mr. Burnbaum, do you have a sprinkler system in your house?
No, we do not.
Do you have fire hydrants available?
No, we do not.
Would the presence of fire hydrants within this neighborhood provide you with greater fire security?
They wouldn't if they're not adequate to assist a fire at my home or in other homes around here.
How far do the fire trucks have to go now to refill if they came to your house?
Well, they have to go as far as they do. I don't know what that distance is, but I know that, that you'll, I don't know what that distance is.
Okay, thank you.
But what's the case is they're not going to be able to access our house if they can't get up this hazardous road.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Burnbaum? Mr. Seward?
Yeah, you may have said it, or Ruth may have, Mr. Burnbaum, but where is your house located at? Is it on this, near this plat, or is it, or what street are you on? That might be a better question.
Is that a question?
Where is your house located in relation to this project?
Our house is 15830 Farview Place. It's just west of the, of the property.
Oh, you're on that existing shore extension of Farview?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And any other questions for Mr. Burnbaum? Thank you for calling in.
Hello?
Hi, is this Nancy?
Yeah.
It is. This is the Plating Board calling for your public testimony on case S 12599. I understand you're representing the Rabbit Creek Community Council, so you will have 5 minutes. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Yes, my name is Nancy Pease, and on behalf of Rabbit Creek Community Council, thank you for this opportunity to testify. Rabbit Creek Community Council has reviewed this case both in 2019 and this year, and I hope you have in your packet the comments submitted to the Plating Board on February 16th. Our main focus of our comments in this go-around has been non-motorized connectivity. Rabbit Creek Community Council has been advocating for pedestrian connectivity along the 156th corridor, and you can see on map 19 in your packet how that would lead almost directly from Golden View Middle School up to the future Mountaineer Drive, and then on to Bear Valley School farther east, also to Section 36 Park. The council's intent is to link these areas. It should be noted that Bear Valley is one of only 2 schools in the entire school district that has 0 safe walking access, and at Golden View, the parental taxi system is part of the reason that the Golden View, Golden View and Rabbit Creek intersection is a choke point when school is letting out or at opening bell. So from our February 16th comments, I want to highlight that we're grateful that the previous conditions acknowledged a 20-foot, or created 20-foot trail easement north to south on lot, along the eastern edge of this property. However, we are concerned that this is not clearly labeled on the plat map, and it needs to be labeled as a public trail easement. In addition, we would like clear labeling of the section line, the 156th alignment, as a public trail easement, and we advocate that the plat include notes that these easements will be cleared and designated or marked before the lots are developed and sold. This is an important factor in letting the property owners know what to expect and in letting the public see the plan for connectivity. In addition, we raise the question of why the Plating Board is securing this connectivity through easements rather than right-of-way dedication. The subdivision standards in Title 21.08.04OD identify rights-of-way as the preferred way to procure pedestrian access. This lifts any obligation and liability of the adjoining property owners. These connections would greatly advance our efforts to have non-motorized connectivity through the area, and we wanted to note the discrepancy between requiring construction of roads but not full construction of trails, particularly within the 156th alignment. This plat, we note, has reduced the width of a piece of road that will be constructed within the 156th alignment from 24 feet to 20 feet wide, so that's narrower and not a safe width for non-motorized users. In addition, if there's going to be a road paved within the section line easement, within this alignment, that precludes or limits future location of the trail. So the 2 really should be planned and built at the same time. Our municipal codes require both non-motorized and motorized infrastructure as part of subdivision development, so we're asking for parity in this regard. And just a final note is that it may sometimes seem premature to build a segment that doesn't connect on both ends, but in this case, Mountaineer Drive is in the scoping process under the AMAT's tip, it's got funding, and there are other tracks adjoining this one or kitty-cornered to this one that are developed, and if, you know, we don't build segment by segment, it never gets done, so that's the way we make a corridor, segment by segment. So that's all. Again, we would just like the plat map and notes to clearly depict the public trail easements. We wish they could be rights-of-way instead of easements, and we would like to request that the trail be constructed along the 156th alignment, since road is partly being built along a part of that alignment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any board member questions for Ms. Pease? Thank you, Ms. Pease.
Hello?
Hi, is this David?
Yes, it is.
This is the Plating Board calling for your public testimony on case S 12599. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
Uh, no, I'm just an individual.
Okay, you'll have 3 minutes to provide your testimony. If you could please state your full name for the record, you can begin.
My name is David Radisky. Can I begin now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Yes, I've lived up here for 45 years in, on the subdivision. I put in Windsong Drive. I'm a 70-year-old Alaskan, and I am against what's happening here. I've been to 5 different times where we've met before the Plating Board, and every time the Fire Department, Police Department have said that the road system is not adequate to add more houses. And we have repeatedly asked for the second exit out of, out of all of these areas to go out to Rabbit Creek Road, and we were told it would happen, and, and we were told that no more houses would be built by the Plating Board, and, but when the money got withdrawn, they went ahead and let the people build. And we've had flooding problems from the subdivisions that have come along, and, and if we ever have a fire like the McQ Creek fire that almost came over the top, we would have no exit. And these people that are trying to develop just say, "We have an exit out Luna." Luna is a locked gate. None of us have a key to that. And so we have no exit, and it's at the bottom, near Golden View, and so it wouldn't help us, anybody that's up near the top. And so we definitely have problems with that. We also have problems with the water system, that their wells may... We also have problems with the water system, um, that their wells, uh, may increase to where we no longer get water to our homes that are below this area that's being developed. The road access where they are asking to put it is in the wrong place. Uh, it's at a corner, uh, where, at the bottom of a steep hill, and it's, it would not be a good place for people coming in. We have too many roads, too many people on this road with no, uh, e-exit elsewhere. So, um, we, um, it's just, it's just not a workable situation right now. And, um, it, uh, is the longest road in the municipality of Anchorage that has no ulterior exit. And, uh, that is, uh, why I'm against this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Do we, does the board have any questions for Mr. Rebisky?
Rebisky.
Rebish?
Rebisky.
Thank you, Rebisky.
Yes.
I don't see any questions for you, Mr. Rebisky.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is Deborah there with you?
The call's already disconnected, but Deborah is at a different number that we'll call now.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, is this Deborah?
Yeah.
This is the Plating Board calling for your public testimony on case S-12599. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
I'm a, I'm an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could please state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Okay, I'm Deborah Lee Rebisky. And I just wrote out some things. I'll try to get it done in three minutes. Um, so, we just spoke with my husband, I think. But we're against a revision to remove the conditions for several reasons. Um, one is the secondary access isn't in place yet, and we need that for exiting in case of a fire. There's a dangerous intersection at the bottom of Farview and Sandpiper. And there's a, um, oh, it's a thing in the middle. Anyway, right there, it's a very steep hill, and when you come out of Farview, uh, there's many near misses, right there. It's a skinny road, um, lots of ice and snow. We're a record snowfall this year. Lots need to be developed far away, and don't clear cut. We've seen a lot of that happen up here. Been up here 45 years as well. Um, lots need to be larger to help retain water through the trees and the ground, and for drainage and the aqua for to be refilled. We want, um, would really appreciate as little pavement as possible because the water just literally runs down the, the hill, and it is steep. And it has compromised sewers and, um, just completely drenched the properties that are below that area. Um, we're against the street lights. It just completely ruined the area. Um, we, we haven't had them in all these years. Some people will put out a few, and it, you know, it lights sufficiently. And we've even used the solar or the automatic light. Um, the fire department has enough trouble getting up here, so, um, we don't want the other phases to be built and, until the next, the, the Mountaineer access is, um, through to Rabbit Creek. And, um, against the community well, really afraid that will compromise our wells. And, um, just kind of one of the last things is this is a very big wildlife area. I mean, we literally have, we have lots of trees, um, and vegetation. We have lots of grizzly bears, black bears, lynx. We see them in the trees, like the grizzlies. Um, we have wolves, coyotes, every kind of bird, imaginal bald eagles and rabbits and songbirds. And, you know, the original owner, she said at one of the first meetings, you know, and, you know, we're for progress, but we'd, we'd like to have the neighborhood built responsibly, you know, in a nice way. And just to clear cut and to do all of these things would really ruin the beauty of the area, just like the original owner said, you know, it'd be nice to have people to be able to live, more people to be able to live up here. But we'd like this, um, subdivision built responsibly and in, with regard for the people that already live here and, um, new homeowners. And, uh, we're definitely most concerned about the access.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am?
Okay, thank you very much.
Hang on a minute. We may have some questions for you. Do we have any questions from the board? I don't see anyone, but I appreciate your time, Mrs. Deborah Rebisky. Thank you.
That concludes telephonic testimony.
Thank you. And do we have any members of the public here with us tonight that want to speak on this matter? Please come forward, sir. Good evening. And your name is?
Thank you.
We turned on your microphone so you can make a good record, and we need you to speak into the microphone. You can move it. It'll move, so it's comfortable for speaking. But that way we get a good record for you?
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Plating Board. My name is Trond Jensen, J-E-N-S-E-N. I too think the, um, the, the egress during a wildfire event is the key issue. I agree with, and concur with a lot of the, the things that have been said about the, the fire safety, the fire egress. I want to bring up a couple more points. Uh, so I live up on, um, what's labeled as number 70 on the map in the package. Uh, it's page three after the cover letter. And we've lived up there for a number of years. The application, the cover letter to the application says that there are only 67 homes developed in this area. We actually live in number 70, so that's, that's an inaccurate statement. I know that there are at least three more homes that will get their CO shortly, probably this summer, spring, summer. And there are definitely, there is at least two more homes breaking ground this year, maybe more. So, to the statements that it, they're stating in their application that it is highly unlikely that these remaining lots will develop at a normal pace, that is inaccurate because we are seeing development as we speak. We're number 70 on the map, and there's at least five more to add to that. So development is moving forward, making the situation worse, and adding additional homes through this proposed plat before that road extension goes in, would be, would be adding to the danger. Second point is that, so the, the Mountaineer Drive extension has been promised before, but it's not been happening. A lot of, a lot of folks have, have talked to that. If you look at Alaska's, um, Alaska State Transportation Department's webpage, they state that that road will, construction will probably start in 2028. And that's a long time to wait for secondary egress when development is already happening. Those are my points. Uh, thank you for your time, and I'll wait if you have any questions.
Thank you. Um, I do have a question. How do you spell your first name?
Trond, T-R-O-N-D.
I, I heard a K instead of a T. Thank you.
It's hard with the mask.
I understand.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Um, Mr. Cross, did you have a question?
No.
Nope. Anyone online? Thank you, Trond.
Thank you.
One last call for anyone from the public here this evening that wishes to speak. Seeing and hearing none, we'll now take rebuttal.
Uh, again, this is Brandon Markot, Triad Engineering. I'll try to answer these questions the best I can here with the time I have left. The Fire Hazard Severity Form, um, that was recently submitted, um, to the board here. Uh, this was completed and provided to AFD as part of our discussions on the private water system. Uh, what it does is it generally shows that water for fire protection ranks higher than access to an area. Um, so if you look at the breakdown, you'll see that ingress egress, uh, scores like a one through five. If you look at fire protection and water source, you'll see you have scores ranging from one through 10. So, um, it's a useful tool. It's not, it, it doesn't throw access to the side and say that's not important, but it does help kind of give an idea of what AFD focuses on, uh, in situations such as this. So a system of this size, uh, needs to be constructed in one sequence with support from the entire development to fund it. The, the well and the, and the system, uh, is generally going to begin construction in northeast corner, closer to the, to the start of what would have been Phase 3. And so, um, the, the pumps and the size of the reservoir and all things want to be constructed for the full scope of the, of the development. And in order to do that, we need the full, uh, the full phase of the development to fund the improvements. It's a pretty big task, um, to build something this size and only rely on, uh, 11 lots or just one phase to fund it. Uh, in regard to Mr. Bernbaum's residence, uh, a fire hydrant is planned roughly 200 feet from his lot. So if you look at the proposed, uh, the proposed plat, there's going to be a fire hydrant planned for between lots, five and six. Uh, we're planning for roughly five, or, excuse me, six hydrants, um, across this development fed by this private system. Uh, AFD has authority, with exception two of the IFC, to allow developments such as this if they feel it will connect, uh, with secondary access in the future. Again, that's addressed within, I think it was page 42 within the packet. It gives them explicit authority, um, to allow this, uh, a, a development of this size. As far as drainage, uh, we're currently working on the preliminary analysis and are working to address the drainage coming down Farview Place. We're aware of the, the runoff from Sandpiper, and we'll be likely trying to do our best to infiltrate all of that, that water and, and handle it before it becomes a, a further problem for the, for the neighbors across the street. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the community well, we are doing our best to locate this thing as far away from the neighbor's wells as we possibly can. So we're trying to locate this thing in the northeast corner, um, of the property, which is a, a minimum of 1,300 feet, uh, from the property lines to the south and east, and about 1,800 feet if you look, uh, in a southwesterly, uh, direction, kitty-corner over to Farview Place. Um, this well isn't anticipated to be any bigger than a residential well. Uh, we've talked with a few well drillers and are planning to, uh, extend a, a residential, um, size well. And, uh, we'll see what we can find for, for water flow. You'll see that we have a condition, uh, in the original conditions, um, that require sign-off from onsite service, uh, onsite services regarding its productivity and its effect on other wells. Uh, so there's a condition in there that we'll have to satisfy. On top of that, ADEC will have to review this water system as well. So we'll have, uh, three points of review between onsite services, ADEC, and, uh, the fire department. And I also just wanted to note that I have the fire department's original, uh, memo as part of the previous case from 2019, and it does not state an explicit concern that they cannot access the area. Um, it does state that the secondary access, the, the lack of secondary access and the lack of, uh, water for firefighting, uh, uh, needs necessitates the need for sprinklers. So, looking back to this, uh, this packet on page nine, uh, the top of, uh, page nine summarizes their position, I think, um, rather simply that the original conditions were placed, uh, on the plat because we did not have, uh, water for firefighting purposes. We have met with them, uh, worked through the process, uh, found out what system would be adequate, and are working now with you to try and implement, implement that type of system. Uh, as far as trails, we have, uh, trail easements planned on the east. I believe these are shown on the preliminary plat. Uh, there's a, a trail planned on the easterly boundary, as well as a trail from the cul-de-sac, uh, to the easterly boundary. And I believe there's also a trail requirement to construct a trail within the section line easement to the north. This trail is actually already constructed. Uh, we have survey information and its location nailed down pretty solidly. Um, so a good chunk of this trail is already constructed within that section line easement. So we'll, we'll be constructing the trail along the, the easterly boundary and from the cul-de-sac, and working with, uh, the, uh, trails coordinator to accept the trail that's already in existence within the section line. And as, as I said earlier, we'll accept the, the trail requirements along 156th. And it looks like I'm about out of time. So, any questions, let me know.
I have a question for you from Don Porter.
Yes, through the chair. The petition, um, could you tell me, uh, on the side, on the well radius, you're going to have to put in a larger well radius protective of, of that? And is that going to limit development of other lots, uh, outside of the, this development?
Uh, through the chair, Mr. Porter, the, the well radius would increase to about 200 feet since it's considered a community well by serving this, this number of, of houses. And it's also located, um, immediately adjacent to Class B wetlands, uh, to the east. Um, so likely, uh, there should be limited impact to the, to the, uh, the neighbor to the east, and then the development to the north is, is undeveloped yet. And it's also cited to give, uh, the lots 23, 20, 21, 22, um, uh, some usable space for their septic system. So we shouldn't expect to use any special type of, uh, septic system. So it's, it's located as, um, to be as little hindrance as possible, uh, hopefully for everybody. So that's, that's the plan.
Uh, that's great. Uh, one other question. Do you have any idea on the reservoir size? And, uh, I assume the fire hydrant will be near the reservoir?
Uh, through the chair, Mr. Porter, that's another item we're currently working with AFD on. We're anticipating probably somewhere in the 50,000 to 60,000 gallon range. Um, the, the configuration would look like a well, uh, generally in the northeast corner with a reservoir, a, a holding tank, if you will, and a pump house, a well pump house that would, uh, pump this water, uh, down to a system within the road, uh, within the road right-of-way, and a network of water pipe that would stretch out throughout the neighborhood, throughout, throughout this subdivision. Uh, and there'll be a series of six hydrants, uh, located, uh, along the interior roads of the, of the development. So the, the, the fire hydrant won't be located generally near the well. It'll actually be located within accessible areas within the right-of-way.
And these hydrants would be accessible in the extent, in the event of a fire, is that correct? To other, I mean, not just to the, this, uh, development, but in any development to the area, if, if AFD needed fire water, um, they could come and get fire water from, from that system?
Yes, yes. It would be available to AFD. This is a kind of a new process, but I anticipate that we'll have to enter into some sort of a water use agreement with them. You know, kind of giving them the legal authority to just show up and, and pull water from our fire hydrants. And I would imagine that that would not be restrictive, um, to saying, "Hey, you can only use this for our neighborhood." We wouldn't place any type of restrictions on that. The, the intent is to, to bring fire water to Hillside. And so we wouldn't, we're not planning to, to have any restrictions for where it can be used if, if AFD needs it.
Not good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Mr. Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Markot. Uh, it comes down to a lot of questions regarding access. We, um, when we approved this plat back in 2019, I recall we were still dealing with this access issue, and that's why we did the phase plan. If I recall, and you can correct me if I'm mistaken, Phase 1 was just something like five or seven houses. It was just the main ones here. It was just the main ones here on Farview Place. In fact, I think it was just lots one through four, maybe five and six, and only those until secondary access was developed. Is that, like, what was, can you help me refresh my memory what Phase One and then Phase Two included?
Through the chair, Mr. Cross. Phase One generally included 11 lots.
Okay.
And it stretched up to the north, basically the westerly third of the development all the way to the north. So you'd go up to that first intersection where we hook a 90-degree left turn and come around up to 156th. Those 11 lots were slated for...
The point is, I remember there being a lot of debate on this board regarding, do we let you just add 11 without a secondary access, understanding that we were already putting some additional demand on this? And now, now the way I see it is you're asking us to remove that and allow all 27 to be developed without any secondary access. We have promises and hopes of a secondary access, but we originally approved this with only 11 houses, understanding that secondary access is critical. So my guess, my question is, I mean, if you look on pages 70, the traffic is pretty adamant about the need for a secondary access. Everybody recognizes the secondary access. I guess my concern is that this can isn't kicked down the road and we allow 27 more houses, and again, nothing happens with secondary access. How does the public's concerns and our concerns get alleviated if we allow all 27 development without any, with this just being, it still is basically proposed. They haven't even acquired the land. It's in the plan, but they haven't, they haven't acquired the, from what I saw, they're still accumulating funding to even connect on the mountain air.
Through the chair, Mr. Cross, I think the way we're looking at this is we're building a development that's safer for the community as a whole. And I understand that we're adding the 27 lots. The Kittleson report was completed to show that the impact of those 20 lots is negligible for traffic flow in the area. AFD has not stated that they have an issue accessing the site. That has not been the issue. The issue has just been secondary access in general. And they have made it very clear that they would prefer to have, their priority is to get water on Hillside. And so this is the solution that we've brought to the table is saying, hey, the mountain air drive is in design, which is the best that we can do. It's out of our hands, but it's, at least it's in design, which has satisfied the fire chief as far as there will be a connection in the future. And we've proposed this private water system to not only help this development, but to help the community as a whole. So I think we're augmenting the original conditions with new conditions that, in our opinion, are just as safe.
Okay. So then the argument or the debate then comes on our part is, is approving this plat, removing that requirement for secondary access, but getting a fire hydrant and fire protection, or expanding the fire protection to the Hillside, does that benefit outweigh the inconvenience of increased traffic on the road before we put a secondary access? I guess that ultimately is the question, because this plat's already been approved essentially through Phase One and Phase Two. We're just making small amendments. Then do we approve a fire plan in lieu of allowing, we're getting that, but we're just maybe not getting that secondary access as quickly as we anticipated? So, all right, excellent. Thank you.
Does Winsong punch through to 156th? Is Winsong a road or is that a development area? I'm looking on page 19. What's keeping it from connecting through?
156th isn't generally constructed for quite a ways.
Okay. And what about on the other side, where the word Luna is? It looks like there's an ability to go into another development. Has that also not been built yet?
Luna is constructed, as one of the previous commenters stated, there's a fire gate at the terminus, well, it's not the terminus of Luna, but between the development to the north and what's generally referred as Prominence Point. So there's a fire gate there, and there is a connection, but as I said, there's a fire gate there. I imagine AFD probably is the guys that have the key to it.
And why do they have a fire gate there? Any ideas?
My guess would be secondary access for Prominence, tying the two subdivisions together. I'm not sure why it was gated. That I do not know.
That gate kind of cuts off the fire department from having access, shorter access to the water that you're looking to bring in, right?
Yeah.
Is there some possibility that that access could be opened? Especially if you're bringing water to the area?
I don't know the immediate answer to that question. Well, yeah, the thought would be that the fire can open it if they want it to be opened.
And do you have any idea, how long does it take to refill a fire truck?
I could not answer that question.
I didn't know if we had some idea how large of an area you guys are going to be able to cover with a 20-minute round trip? Because a 20-minute round trip cuts the, you know, cuts the score on your system by half from a 45-minute trip. And I'm just wondering how large of an area the fire department might actually use this location for, for improving not just your neighborhood, but all of the ones around it?
If I had to take a guess, I would think that they're probably carrying 3,000 to 5,000 gallons, maybe, somewhere in 3,000 to 4,000 gallons. We're going to be providing water flow at 500 GPM minimum, so maybe six, seven, eight minutes to fill a truck.
Okay.
With a NASCAR pit crew, I guess.
According to Google, it's 2 minutes and 24 seconds.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
That gives you about eight minutes of one-way driving? Were there any other areas that you wanted to add some additional testimony?
Through, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. I believe I've addressed or attempted to address most of the concerns. We've heard the concerns regarding secondary access. Mountain air drive is something that we're relying on the AMAS program to bring to fruition. Its status on in design is a big component of that. It is moving forward, and the planning department has voiced their support that this project is not a, something that's so far from the future that it's not going to happen. So we're trying to think outside the box and solve a problem here. The previous conditions were bestowed upon us by AFD and planning because there was no other alternative. That was the, that was the solution in the toolbox at the time. And so we came back and looked at this thing from a different perspective and said, well, what if we do this? What if we provide a private water system and bring water to Hillside as the fire department would like? And it turns out, it's something that's possible, but it needs the full support of the development in order to do that. It's not an inexpensive process. It is a fairly new process, and we're working through the fire department to figure that out. The roads within this development that connect all the way to Sandpiper will be built to code. They'll be 20-foot wide roads. They will be paved in this case. And the drainage will be a very important component. The city will require a very extensive drainage analysis to be completed, and it gets reviewed very thoroughly when we submit our civil plan. And this isn't the last step of the process for us by any stretch. We'll be completing our civil plans and submitting those to the city, to AFD, and to ADEC to start the review process. Within the municipality alone, there are about eight sets of eyeballs just within the municipality that review and comment on our plan set. That does not include AFD, who would make number nine, and now we have ADEC to add to that as well. So we have a lot of cooks in the kitchen that will voice their concerns and their opinions and make sure that we adhere to code. So there's a lot of people to satisfy in terms of the municipality before we get to a stamped set of plans. So we've got a long way to go, but we feel we have a system here, a solution here that works for the community and for AFD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you also address the issue on the right-of-way versus easement on those trails? Why, it would seem that right-of-way would be better for the homeowners instead of an easement, and that's supposed to be the preference in the code?
Certainly, the issue with the right-of-way is if we dedicated a 20-foot right-of-way along that easterly boundary, it would impact the lot sizes for, I believe it was nine lots along the north and east. A lot of these lots are acre and a quarter to 1.3 acres. The minimum lot size for our 10 is 1.25. So we are on the verge of being under the minimum lot size. So dedicating right-of-way would, might impact our lot count to drop three lots from the plat. So the easement is an alternative. I understand that right-of-way can be preferred, but the easement has been an accepted alternative to the planning department and to the trails coordinator.
Thank you. Does that raise any other questions with any of the board members? Seeing and hearing none, that will conclude the public hearing, and the matter now rests with the board. May I have a motion to approve? Mr. Cross.
You may. Regarding S-12599, amendment to S-12420, Spruce State subdivision, lots one through 27, phases one through three, move to approve the request to remove conditions C1 and conditions D.15, C, D, and E from the previous approved preliminary plat, subject to the following conditions in addition to those previously required. Nine, entering into a subdivision agreement with private development for requiring public Class B area improvements to include asphalt streets, traffic control devices, street signs, monuments, drainage facilities, utilities for the following A, B, C, D, and E. And it says, I believe 17 and 18, are those supposed to be other items that we're supposed to vote on, or is that included?
I think they are part of this. They're numbered this way, so it coordinates with the existing plat that we had already approved.
All right. And also includes 17, submit onsite water, wastewater section, and approval to construct from AEDC drinking water group. And then what's not in our staff packet but was handed to us from the staff, 18, construct a separate soft surface trail for non-motorized use along East 156th Avenue, peripheral improvements, and resolve the exact alignment and width with non-motorized trail coordinator and private development.
Thank you. And do I have a second for this motion? Mark Seward has seconded. Mr. Cross, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I think it's really important that, we've already approved this plat. Like, we've already, we've already weighed it and deemed it worthy. What we're talking about here is a, really an alteration of the phasing plan. And ultimately, when we originally had this conversation, we all understood how important it was that the secondary access was in there. And of our nine petitioners who came for eight, I mean, I've got eight individuals I have listed here, I know that six of them said they wanted the road access because of, they mentioned fire department. Well, although we don't get that secondary access, what we are allowing them to do by removing this phasing plan is essentially add seven fire hydrants and add a way for fire trucks to refuel, which is the reason for the access. I guess the analogy was used to the public, it's like, hey, you know, you need two points of egress for a bedroom, but if you only have one, wouldn't you want a fire sprinkler system and an extinguisher in your room? And I think that's what we're doing. We've added, we're allowing them to add the fire, a fire grid and public water system, which resolves also the issues the neighbors had about water use in their neighborhood and all these wells being drilled. I guess I just see this as resolving a lot of those concerns and as well as adding a massive layer of safety to it, which is why the fire department is so supportive of it. The only individuals, the only department I saw that was not so keen on it was traffic. And that's just the number of cars that they have that are continuing to go down, what is that, Winsong? Or, excuse me, strip pave here, forgive me, Sandpiper, that are continuing to go down Sandpiper until that secondary access. We all understand, at least it is believed, that the secondary access is going to go in, is going to go off mountain air. But we also understand that that is not guaranteed to happen in the immediate future. But in the meantime, until that's done, I think adding the fire hydrants and allowing this to go through is a fantastic way to resolve some of the fire concerns in this area until that road is in. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other findings that the board would like to make? Don Porter. You have the floor, Don Porter.
Thank you. I would like to find, and I will be speaking in support of the motion. The discussion that we've had has been about access versus water, and the fire department has clearly determined that water is more important than access. And they've stated it'll be 50,000 or 60,000 gallons worth of storage and 500 GPM capability to fill, say, a 2,500-gallon tanker that could radiate out from anywhere, and it's actually uphill other than coming from downhill once it's on-site. As everybody knows, in an emergency, time is a factor. And if they can reduce the time and the amount of trips to fill and all of these things, there's a net benefit to the community as a whole. And we see that in this situation. And so adding the fire storage and water to fight a fire has been deemed the higher priority based on the calculations that have been put in front of us. And so that's why I would be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Do we have any other board members that would like to speak? Mark Seward?
Yeah, none of us are firemen, so myself, I would just really rely on the experts of the fire department. And when I read their note on page three that they support approval of construction on Spruce Terrace Sub with revised conditions, I put a heavy weight on that personally because they are the experts. And this seems like a very good plan and idea, and I hope it gets expanded in the future for other areas on the Hillside, and I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other board members that would like to weigh in?
I would like to make findings that the fire hazard severity form that was provided and was discussed with the fire department does more strongly weight the access to water than it does the ingress and egress, that there's been absolutely no complaint with the fire department with respect to their ingress or egress to the area, and that the roadway that is going to be constructed is going to increase that capacity, and also the likelihood that Luna, the drive that currently is gated, may in fact be removed so that those homes would have closer access to the fire department, fire hydrants. I know that people's property insurance rates wind up being reduced the closer they are to fire hydrants, and so it would be very valuable to those homes in that development and any of the other homes with respect to reducing their insurance costs as well as increasing the safety and ability to put out fires. I think that this is an excellent solution, and I would like to see that we would use it in future developments on the area. I also find that the likelihood that mountain air will in fact be developed by the municipality and/or the state of Alaska is very high and that... the municipality and/or the state of Alaska is very high, and that based on that, we are entitled to rely on the existence or the expectation that that road will be put in as giving additional access. And with respect to public safety, I think the findings are that the development being put in with this fire system is in the weight, in the balance of safety, a safer solution than previously. I also find that economically it would not be viable for a private party to put in a fire suppression system such as this without being able to develop the entire package at once, rather than doing it in a long phasing plan. And so I'm going to vote in favor of the motion on the floor.
Does that raise any other questions for board members? Seeing and hearing none, I will call the vote.
Mr. Porter?
Yay.
Ms. McGilroy?
Yay.
Mr. Cross?
Yay.
Mr. Seward?
Yay.
Ms. Ritz?
Yay.
And Chair Walker?
Yay.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end, and we have annual election of officers. Do we have anyone wanting to make any nominations?
I would like to nominate for chair, Clayton Walker, and we want to do vice chair at this time also.
Go ahead, you can...
I'd like to nominate Kevin Cross for this position.
Okay. And are there any other nominations? Do we have a second for the nominations on the floor? Thank you. Might as well second the whole floor slate, I think, but I don't know.
Can I second myself?
I don't know. Can I second him?
Yes, you may second yourself.
Done. There we go. And with that, we have no other nominations. We'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Porter?
Yay.
Ms. McGilroy? Mr. Cross?
Yay.
Mr. Seward?
Yay.
Ms. Ritz?
No.
And Chair Walker?
Yay.
Thank you.
And with that, we will seat the new members at the next meeting. Okay. Very well. With that, we'll now be adjourned. Thank you very much for your patience and diligence this evening.